All right. Good afternoon. I called to order the Lynchburg Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, September 27, 2017. The first item is the approval of the August 9, 2017, Planning Commission minutes. Any corrections or additions? Motion to approve?
What's the motion?
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And Robin, I'll be abstaining because we were... So two abstentions. Thank you. The next item is under new old business, discussing the sidewalk ordinance. A couple of comments before we get into that. First, thank you, Robin, for putting everything together for us to review. That was real nice to be able to look back over the last two meetings. And thank you, big shout out to planning staff for putting together all those summaries. That was also very helpful to see what other people have done. And then finally, I need to make a statement following up from our last meeting, since we had a member from the public in charge of New Covenant Schools. My son goes to New Covenant, and after the last meeting, I felt it worthwhile to touch base with the city attorney. He said no conflict of interest legally, and as long as I felt unbiased, I could continue in the discussions. If anyone has concerns about that before this becomes a public item again, I am happy to chat about that between now and then.
And I would make the same comment.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You have a child at New Covenant?
Three.
Three?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah. He said because he's not the petitioner, and there's no direct benefit or negative, we could continue. But yeah, I'm always happy to recluse myself.
[laughing]
All right, let's jump right into this discussion.
So where would you guys like to start?
Can you just block us in?
[laughing]
Was that Ken?
Do you think you do the nine thirteen minutes?
That's because I did just the portion of the sidewalks. I'm going to give you the rest of them next time.
So I guess just very briefly, just to bring you back up to where we are, obviously, the ordinance was adopted in 2016. This is exactly what we looked over last time, so I'll be very brief. Our current ordinance requires sidewalks to be provided along all frontages of all streets, subject to site plan review, multi-household, multi-occupants centers, after also provide a walkway from the sidewalk to the building entrance. Current ordinance allows the zoning administrator to eliminate or lessen the sidewalk requirements when they're cross slopes in excess of 25% across the right-of-way, or stormwater conveniences, or other physical constraints render construction unfeasible. Different districts require different width of sidewalks. Most areas are five feet. You get into the more intense commercial districts, six feet, and then really your downtown is your largest, where it's eight feet. Subdivision ordinance, though, this really isn't that new of a requirement. Subdivision ordinance has been requiring sidewalks since 2010, and it's related to, at least on one side of the street, for a larger development with more vehicles. It would be two sides of the street. Main difference is, in the subdivision ordinance, the cost is shared 50/50 by the city and the developer. As we all know, our comprehensive plan is very supportive of enhancing mobility for all of our residents. It promotes walkability, it promotes density, which sidewalks help also promote that. We also have the Better Streets Policy, which is in the comprehensive plan, which talks about striking a balance between all users, prioritizing the pedestrian and bicyclists, and also the vehicular circulation. We looked at this map. This map is very telling about where the existing sidewalk network is in relation to the existing street network. We talked about support for the standard of requiring sidewalks, active and healthy living, definitely improves safety and provides transportation choices. We talked about social equity, travel not being a choice for all of our citizens, young, old, disabled, and low income. And we also know that access to goods and services is limited by our land use patterns. We know that sidewalks promote economic development and is better for our environment. We also know that sidewalks are supported by several different initiatives, including Live Healthy Lynchburg, Bridges Out of Poverty, and council's adopted priorities. We also know that there's concerns with sidewalks, financial. You know, it's definitely a cost involved in building sidewalks, both on the city side and the private development side. We know from looking at the sidewalk network that there are going to be instances where there may be a sidewalk requirement, where there's no other sidewalks in the area. And, you know, the reason the city's not going in and putting them in everywhere is because of budgeting concerns. So what we did last time is we tried to draft some flexibility into the existing ordinance as directed by council. So what we did, and I'm not saying this is the right way to go or the wrong way to go, but just to start the discussion, what we did is, instead of saying every street, so if you have a property that has frontage on three or four different streets, what this says is that it would only, you would only have to do it on two streets. And that being, the way it's worded is, the primary street, and the way this is worded, the primary street would be the street on which the property is addressed, and then secondary street frontage would be the one containing the highest number of vehicle trips per day. Now, since this was drafted, staff has had some discussion that the definition of primary street may need to be tweaked or changed, and that just because a property is addressed on one street, that might not be the street with the highest number of vehicles, and it might not be the most appropriate place for sidewalk to be. We also looked at, we left in the ability for the zoning administrator to lessen the requirement for the cross slope or other physical constraints, but we also added in that the zoning administrator could eliminate the requirement for the sidewalk on the secondary street if it had less than 100 vehicle trips per day, or if the area served by the secondary street will not generate in excess of 100 trips per day based on zoning and the comprehensive plan's future land use map. So what we tried to do with this is we looked at those, you remember the maps we showed you of areas, we tried to go in and say, okay, yeah, some of these are questionable on whether or not it's equitable to be requiring these sidewalks. So we tried to write in something that would address those concerns. And then we wrote in the ability to waive it if the development's disturbing less than 5,000 square feet, 5,000 cumulative square feet. And the reason 5,000 was chosen is because that's the stormwater threshold. And just like the stormwater ordinance, if you do 4,999 square feet this time, if you come in, you can't come in next time and do 4,999 just to not have to do the stormwater. It is cumulative over time. And then we just added in where if you are grading in the right-of-way, and it ends up that the sidewalk's not required, that it would be graded in such a way as not to prohibit the future installation. So that's what was proposed. I think what we heard at the last your public hearing is that the commission still had some concerns and wanted to look at some other ordinances, which we provided to you. So I think a good place to start would be to look at what we've drafted here and start talking about whether it goes too far, or if it doesn't go far enough, or exactly what the commission's concerns are with sidewalks. So, you know, the different ordinances that I looked at, you know, they were kind of all over the place, but I think the main thing that Ann and I were talking about is they might have some good ideas, and they might work for that locality. We're not sure if they would work for Lynchburg, because Lynchburg's development patterns have been a lot different. You know, since the '76 annexation, things just kind of sprawled out. And so, and you can look at that sidewalk network and kind of see the way that happened.
And didn't you tell us last time, or one time when we were talking about this, that when we, somebody suggested, how about a fund like we have for stormwater or something? It's illegal to have a sidewalk fund in the state of Virginia, is it?
Our city attorney has advised that it's not permissible to have them make a payment into a sidewalk fund. Other localities are doing it. That doesn't make it legal. It just means they're doing it. So we have to err on going with what our city attorney says. And, you know, far as city attorneys go, I think Mr. Irwin is probably the best one in the state of Virginia, and I would go with what he says every time.
I didn't know if it was a Virginia law or...
It is.
Okay. Must not be a Tennessee law.
Or Charlottesville, for that matter.
Oh, I see.
Are they still doing that?
The way I read it, they were, yes. So what are your main concerns about the sidewalk ordinance?
I guess one of the things, just to revisit and get some kind of explanation from the view of planning, and as we, you know, think about trying to be smart, the kind of growth that we have, I wondered why we give residential development help making their sidewalks, but then commercial establishments get no help. And I don't think that's really, I know that's not something that you set up or anything. It's more, I think, the framework that this has all been created in. While I think, you know, it's great to get help from the city to build stuff, I hate that residential developments that actually burden our systems more than commercial do in the way of revenue. Do you know what I'm saying?
I know exactly what you're saying. I think it's purely a policy decision. The city's been cost-sharing curb, gutter, and sidewalk as long as I've been here, so well over 20-some years. My thought on that is that the city was trying to incentivize people to develop single-family homes in the city, because our standard for new streets is curb, gutter, sidewalk for residential streets. Yet, if you go out in the county, that's not the standard. So in order to incentivize people to come into the city, the city's saying, yeah, we know we've got this additional requirement, yet we're going to help cost-share to help get people to locate the single-family homes within Lynchburg. Now, that being said, there's not a lot of single-family developments being built in the city anymore either. You know, back in the early '90s, there were a lot of single-family subdivisions going on. Now it's really not.
Seems to me one of the issues we had last time was that there wasn't enough flexibility, or there was no recourse. It's just, this is the law, you've got to do it, and there's nobody, you can petition. I see in Alexandria, the city manager may waive the application of this section whenever he finds that curb, gutter, or sidewalk construction will not be compatible with the character of the neighborhood or serve a substantial useful purpose. So I feel sorry for that city manager. And I doubt that ours really wants that to do, but it's there. And I think I saw it in Nashville, too. I can't remember now.
I think I saw it in almost every single plan. There was flexibility built in where someone could take circumstances into account.
With the exception of Alexandria, I believe the rest of them had standards on what they could waive it for. It wasn't, and that's what I've been trying to say all along. If you want to build and waiver standards, which is what we were trying to do here, let's base it on something. Let's just not base it on, I really don't want to build this sidewalk. All right? There needs to be a reason for not doing it. And that could be, you know, you're X amount of feet away from another sidewalk. It could be, you know, whatever, but let's put that standard in here, so that it's clear on what it can be waived for, and it doesn't just become a, I don't want to do it.
I thought the pedestrian benefit zone was interesting. To try to overlay that might be really difficult, but I thought that was really interesting, because I thought that that addressed a lot of the areas where, you know, we have density and trying to develop density, which seems like that's what they're trying to do with that.
In Nashville?
Yeah. Yeah, and I'm not exactly sure, you know, I don't know what their background. I know that, I looked at something, they've already been through it three times. You know, they keep revisiting it, but I wondered about that, the ability to look at our plan and then look at areas that we expect, and actually have different criteria for different areas. Because those people, those developers, for example, when they developed a cornerstone, they would put in what it took to get the job done, you know, because they feel like there's a value to being in that location. They felt the density, and if they ever develop along Timberlake, they'll put in sidewalks there, because they know there's a value to be able to get people to cross the street from the apartments and shop, you know. So when there's development like that, I think it drives the value of this type of infrastructure. So in other areas, though, where there isn't any projected density in our plan, you know, that's actually, you know, even like more of a conservation-type area that almost looks like that in the plan, you know, then people do raise a question as to like, why in the world would I do this? And we could say, well, one day it might develop. Then it might one day, but, you know, probably not while I'm alive, you know. I don't know if anybody that had been considered.
So along that lines, would it be good to look at our future land use map?
And that's what I, yeah, that's what I was thinking of how, you know, because transit plays a part. I saw in some of these that it was tied to transit, you know, that sidewalks, because that gives people the ability to walk to bus stops. And I've, you know, I've talked to a couple council people, and not, you know, they're like, well, you know, the sidewalks. I care about sidewalks, that's what everybody says, but I do think that it's really important to have them in the right places. You know, I don't think, it isn't, I'm not against them, but I feel like we really need to put pressure on the people in the right places, and that might direct that. I think it'd be nice, like you were saying, to have some kind of framework where it took the decision out of the hands of people here and place it in some kind of thing that they can look at and say, well, that's logical for me. I'm building where there's a bunch of bus stops, and we're trying to, people are walking, I want sidewalks.
And Nashville's is tied to a pretty significant pedestrian bicycle plan, but unfortunately, we don't have at this point, but they have the luxury to tie it to that. They've done significant analysis, saying these are the places, you know, where development's going to occur. On the other hand, our ordinance is set up to require the sidewalk to go in where the development is happening. So if you think about it that way, you're building something, it's going to be a new destination. That's maybe where a sidewalk needs to be, because you're building something new that people need to go to. It's a little more reactive than proactive like Nashville's.
And when Nashville, they're tearing down and building up all the time. I mean, they're just tearing out old stuff and putting in new stuff willy-nilly. It's crazy.
Yeah, so this is the adopted future land use map, if I can get it to... So, you know, the light yellow is the single-family, so that's the lowest density areas. And then where the colors start popping in, that's kind of where your density starts building up. And that kind of correlates, it's all over the place. Yeah. It kind of correlates with where the sidewalks are now, except when you start getting out like some of the major roads, like Timberlake Road, and Old Forest, and Ward's Road, those places. It's not there. Then Lakeside Drive's another example.
You mean for residential areas?
No, I'm talking about more denser developments.
Oh, denser development.
Where they are now.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I mean, another, when we originally proposed this, we wrote it as, if I remember correctly, a quarter mile from a school.
Bus stop.
Bus stop.
Public park.
Public park or other sidewalk, is the way we wrote it. When it went through, council said, no, we think sidewalks are important everywhere, and that's how we ended up here. So now we're back. So the, I think the...
We can bring those exemptions back.
We could. I mean, the reason, the other thing I thought about was looking at where the GLTC network was, you know.
That's in the transportation section.
Yeah.
How, so what is, how difficult is the process of developing a pedestrian and bike way plan? Just curiosity, I don't...
It depends on what level of plan you want, and how much you want in it. I don't think, I don't know if staff can do it on their end.
Consultants.
And it would kind of have to stand in line. I mean, right now, we're doing Downtown, and then we're doing Tyriana. So it would be probably middle of next year before we could get to it. Yeah, so here's a great map.
You don't have sidewalks on top of transportation.
But side by side, which is...
Yeah, sidewalk is the up top map, and then transportation below it.
So, yeah, I mean, you can kind of see how out Timberlake, there's nothing. I can't tell about Ward's Road. I know they go down Ward's Road, don't they?
They do.
But, you know, it's really, it doesn't extend all the way down Ward's Road. Nothing out here.
It's really good. They said Rock Creek, whatever, there by Walmart. They had sidewalks.
The Ward's Road Trail.
Are they, they're finishing that?
It's, is it funded yet?
No, not finished yet.
No. It's far out in the CIP.
Well, back to the flexibility issue. I mean, I didn't find stringent requirements in many of these other jurisdictions. I'm seeing, this is for Madison, where the city commission finds that strict compliance with this section creates an extraordinary hardship, the commission may waive the requirements. And I'm seeing things like that, not necessarily specifics. The one we mentioned...
City manager.
In Alexandria. And I see more of that than this. So I guess I still don't understand why there can't be that ultimate, some sort of out. And even if you go back two weeks to when the city transportation engineer was talking about a flow chart, he mentioned financial hardship as part of the equation, that if it exceeds a certain level, then maybe the city would step in as cost-share. I mean, I understand, we don't want to open the door up, but again, that's, that is why we are here.
That's exactly what you're doing, is opening the door. And what I'm telling you as your city planner, and we'll draft it any way you want to, I'm telling you that if you draft it, draft the ordinance without specific standards for waiving it, it is not a good model for a zoning ordinance. And you, the ordinance requirements need to be so that they can be implemented and required equally across the board. And if you just have, if you have just which way, you know, the commission might be thinking that day, right, if you have nothing to base your opinion on or your waiver on, what are you going to do? Why would you waive it? Because, why? There's a tree there, there's, what are you basing that on?
But that's what, but that's what we do with everything that comes before us.
No, you're basing it on zoning standards, you're basing it on impacts, you're basing it on development standards out of the ordinance. You're not just...
But if someone comes before us requesting a CUP or something, they're coming up with reasons for it that we may never have seen before.
But the ordinance says that it may be permissible in this district, all right? Says that it may, if you can address. And then there's development standards built in the ordinance, you know, a list of things for like a church, a list of things for schools, so on and so forth. And you review it and make sure it's meeting those development standards. If it doesn't, you know, you're not approving it. Or if it creates an impact that they can't address, or do you think isn't appropriate in that area, you don't recommend approval of it. We're talking about a standard that is being applied equally across the entire city. And just to say, you know, John Doe has to do it, but Jane doesn't, without having some reasoning and rationale behind it, my thought is that's not a good way to draft an ordinance.
I just, I just keep thinking of James River Day School having to build three streets worth of sidewalks, and it just doesn't seem quite fair, but they...
But why is it not fair?
Well, I mean, there's just so much sidewalk that they've got to build. And that third street, they own the only house on the street, it's at the end of the street.
Which is, that's the reason we propose primary and secondary streets.
Right.
And if the secondary street had less than 100 vehicles, it wouldn't have to be built.
Okay. So under these requirements, they would only have to build...
At least two.
They still have to do that. Their homes are physically drop-off, was...
Not under this, because it's only primary and secondary.
Oh.
If it has three or four different frontages, you're only having to do two.
Okay.
I think my, like, if I were doing the James River, so maybe we look at it from what we'd want in the end. And to me, I would, I would want, and I've talked to several people about this, I would want a sidewalk along Boonsborough Road, no matter what. You know, I don't know about the side street, but I feel like that front street, you know, if someone said, why would you do that? I'm like, because there's one gap of undeveloped land now in between a neighborhood and that school, and that would actually start building out. And to me, that would be one of those things that would fall under a certain logic, you know, where there's, you know, the interconnectedness that we're developing. So I do think that I would, I would have voted to put a sidewalk there. I would have said, yeah, I think you should have a sidewalk there. So I do think there's a need for it in James River's, in their case, along that frontage that they have.
So does everyone, does everyone agree that there should be sidewalk on at least a primary frontage?
To me, it depends on the density of the traffic. And the reason I say it is because that's a road that has a lot of traffic. So if that school, or, you know, let's say a good example is the Hawkins Graves, you know, how much traffic does Florida, maybe it should be dictated by the level of traffic along the street. You know, how much traffic does Florida, maybe it should be dictated by the level of traffic along the street. I don't know what this, you know, six thousand, I think is a lot. That's a head, that's a lot of traffic. So, you know, maybe, maybe that number is too big. But, I mean, that's one thing where I would say that I would weigh in favor of a, you know, number one, it's connecting two areas. Yeah, there's one area that isn't done, but it connected to another one. And that went all the way to the shopping center, which you could walk down in, and there's a sidewalk that goes down into the shopping center. And to me, that promotes walkability. And people on side streets tend to walk and bike on the streets anyway, even if they, you know, on side streets, even if they have sidewalks, you're not even supposed to ride your bike on a sidewalk. So it didn't really, you know, that doesn't impact it. But, but I would think that would need it.
Well, and that's why on the secondary, we said, you know, if the secondary street had less than a hundred vehicle trips per day, then you wouldn't have to do it. Right? So maybe that's not the right vehicle count. Maybe that's too few. You know, maybe it's two hundred vehicle trips per day, maybe it's four. We did talk with the transportation engineer about that number. That's a very low number of trips, really.
So I think if they had that, you know, even if there was like a hardship requirement based on the value of what they did, there wouldn't be, you know, the one frontage, there wouldn't be as much of an argument about it. I don't think that
Excuse me, how far down are you proposing this sidewalk? Are you proposing all the way down to Irvington Springs, all the way down to Irvington Springs Road?
No, that's not their frontage.
No, but when you said, you said all down Boonsborough Road, I'm trying to
Yeah, so
I'm sitting there looking at it.
So basically, their property goes down past the fields, there's one wooded section. And then there's a sidewalk along that new development on Irvington. I think it's Irvington Springs. And they have a sidewalk in that little, the new community there.
Farm Hill.
Yeah. And it might not even, I don't think that shows up on my map. That new development.
I was just curious now, how far down were you looking at putting a sidewalk there?
So to me, the volume of traffic and in the value of the project. For example, if you have a, you know, if you have a ten thousand dollar project, but it's gonna cost, you know, fifty thousand dollars for sidewalks, that would make no sense. You would never wanna do that, you'd never do that. But if you have a million dollar project, you know, and fifty thousand dollar sidewalks, you know, that's not a big issue. And if you have a lot of traffic, it's a, it's a need.
Well, and I understand that completely. I guess the, the issue that I would throw out for discussion is we're trying to play catch up here for something that we probably should've been doing years ago. And I'm sure over time, there's been a million dollars worth of investment out there, alright? So at what point do you say, you know, guys, you really need to put this sidewalk in?
It's also a practical issue of getting accurate reporting on what the cost of a project is. We draw a line in the sand, like with the five thousand square feet. People are gonna come in and do four thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine.
Well, in Nashville, I saw they, they actually are really like, you know, they're pretty flexible in that. You know, the by square foot or by value, and not to exceed fifty percent of the cost. And if you're that flexible, you know, you can see how, well, that could be a really big development. If you, if you do that. So I, I do think the, the, you know, those percentages, some were having some kind of percentage as a framework that it just kind of fits in and you can say, well, you've exceeded this. And I don't know if cumulative, you know, how that works. You know, I don't think anybody, if they're planning on building half a million square feet and they have a hundred thousand, they're gonna try to, try to cumulatively develop half a million square feet. They're not gonna be like, well, we're gonna just chunk in twenty-five percent for the next ten years to build that out.
One thing we we kinda toyed with at a staff level is, you know, we exempted, if you were, well, the draft ordinance exempts you if you're under five thousand square feet, right? So that kinda takes care of these very small additions on these properties with big developments. The other thing that we, we at least discussed was trying to come up with a square footage ratio per hundred feet of road frontage. And, you know, and that's looking at what's there now and in the future. And at the time you exceed it, that's the time you have to put the sidewalk in. The problem with that is, it's just like anything else, you know, if the square footage ends up being fifty thousand square feet based on your frontage, they're gonna stop at four thousand, forty thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine, alright? And I'm not I'm not sure that that's really the best way to go, but it is a thought.
And just on a staff level, I've been hesitant to tie it to value or any kind of monetary improvement. Cause at a site plan stage, when we're implementing the sidewalk requirement, we're not getting, how much is this gonna cost at that point? The developer probably doesn't really have a hard number at that point. And so that, just from a practical standpoint, it would be really hard to enforce the monetary
So you do the square footage, but that is the disturbed square footage. So actually, a two thousand square foot addition is probably, might disturb three thousand, thirty-five hundred, right?
A really hilly site, they'll have to disturb more.
Mm-hmm, right.
Flat, then they might be able to get away with just the building.
Can you tell me again, why five thousand? What was, I mean, I know you said something about the runoff, but why, why is that the threshold?
That's the city's threshold for stormwater management, before you have to address water quality and quantity.
So when you hit five thousand square feet, you're doing a much more significant development at that point. It's a much bigger investment when you've got a treat for stormwater quality and quantity, quantity. So it kinda made sense to say, okay, once you hit five thousand square feet, you're, you're on a different level than those smaller, smaller developments.
So in your mind, y'all felt that that, that was a good indicator of, we need to require a sidewalk?
Well, we originally said, okay, that's, that it's all, this is what I feel like we're doing, is we, we have a comprehensive plan that promotes walkability. And we say we wanna promote walkability in the city. Yet, yet we're kinda backing our way into trying to figure out ways not to require people to put sidewalks in. And that's exactly what we're sitting here doing, really. Is, okay, how can we really write this so nobody will have to put a sidewalk in, is what I feel like. So we, we, the reason we came up with that five thousand was, we looked at the Florida Avenue development. He was doing like a four thousand square foot building addition. He didn't have to do a stormwater plan. So we said, you know, we really ought to exempt these small buildings. We're already exempting for five thousand on stormwater, let's just use that number. And that's how we came up with five thousand.
So someone buys a wooded lot that's just about two acres. And he has to take out an acre and a half worth of trees. He's gonna put in a two thousand square foot house. So he's gonna be taking out, he's gonna be disturbing over a hundred thousand square feet.
We're not talking about single family at all.
Okay, okay.
Or duplexes.
Okay, great, that clarifies a lot of issues.
Townhomes, multifamily, commercial and industrial.
Okay, so that calms a lot of issues. And that's, I think, causes some confusion for, at least for me, that's why I'm asking the question. Cause it's not clearly stating, okay, single family dwellings does not pertain to you.
It says, subject to site plan review. And single family homes are not subject to site plan review under the ordinance. So, single family homes, duplexes are all, we don't review those.
So going hand in hand with that, that was advocate, so how do we get the sidewalks in those areas in the future?
City comes in and puts them in, or they just don't have them.
Okay. And in future plans, and when the city plans on doing future construction, do they automatically plan for the sidewalk? Case in point, we're gonna be replacing the Indian Hill Road Bridge and the Link Road Bridge. Are they gonna include a sidewalk? There'll be a sidewalk to nowhere on both sides?
Typically, we put sidewalks in.
Yeah, and when they've been doing bridge replacements, they've at least done it on one side. I would hope they would do it on both.
The Link Road will have at least a sidewalk, we'll go a few feet to an existing sidewalk. The Indian Hill Road one will not.
The Florida Avenue Bridge is an example, they replaced that right by that train trestle and they put in the sidewalk there, when they replaced it. Even though it goes to nowhere, it goes to the train trestle. Well, it's safety, needed.
Run on that route and it's crossing that bridge. Um, I, my, having only, you know, been on this commission for a few months and this being my very first time of, you know, hearing the sidewalk issues, the only concern that I have, or the, the two people that I heard, you know, kind of complained about it, which was the, you know, the James River Day School and the New Covenant Schools. So the, the only concern I had was, how can we write this up so that, you know, there's not such a major burden, like as far as New Covenant goes, just, you know, that hundred thousand dollar burden put on them for a, a project that, you know, wasn't gonna be costing, you know, I guess the, the ratio of cost for that. But, that being said, I totally understand your issues and how you're trying to write this up. And I, I really don't know what the best answer is. You know, I mean, I would love to see some kind of exemption, you know, hardship exemption or, or something. But, you know, I, I understand, Tom, how you really don't wanna put that in there just cause you feel like
I'm saying, if you wanna put it in there, define what the hardships are. And again, back to New Covenant School, has, that requirement has nothing to do with this sidewalk.
I understand.
Nothing.
I understand.
Even if you gutted the sidewalk ordinance today, it went away, they still have to build that sidewalk unless they come back to council.
In general terms of, we can still discuss.
Like you mentioned, the ratio of a twenty thousand dollar project and a huge sidewalk investment versus a million dollar project and the same sidewalk investment, there is a difference.
But over time, do you not think that they've invested over a million dollars on that site?
True.
Yeah.
So
So I guess in Nashville, like they have, their exemptions are, you know, the fifty percent over five years, you know? So I don't know, it, it, it seems very complicated to come up with some kind of formula in which, you know, how do you define how, you know, the, the value of New Covenant, you know, from one, you know, from one time point to another, and, you know what I mean? It, it's all complicated. So anyway.
At the risk of sounding anti-capitalist, I would, I would much, I almost feel like there should be a different standard for the single land holder who is not developing for development sake, like as a profit, profit venture versus a developer who is going into a piece of land, developing it for profit. I think there's, there are different costs and values associated with it. And I think a developer understands the value. And I think the struggle comes in when the single user, or the single business, or the single nonprofit, like the historical, we use the historical foundation with the Point of Honor, has a hard time seeing the value, cause it doesn't bring them value. And so then they feel like it's a disproportionate burden for them. And they don't have the money sometimes.
Well, historical foundation doesn't have anything to do
Well, you know what I mean, they have the historical building, that Point of Honor.
But, but the, but I, when I think of these nonprofits, like private schools and museums or historical foundations or whoever you wanna say, if, if anybody needs a sidewalk, they do. I mean, certainly schools, I, I, I have a hard time exempting a school from putting a sidewalk in front of their school. I mean, I think schools, I mean, I would love for kids to walk to school again. I know that doesn't happen much anymore, but I definitely think we, they're the last ones we should exempt from sidewalks. At least kids need to know what a sidewalk is.
Well, I think you, I just argue the same with the Hawkins Graves. It's the same argument, I'm just using that argument, not talking about the school, talking about an individual company. There's no value for Hawkins Graves. Yeah, that's on Florida Avenue, that's where it's at, they didn't build. So therefore, there's, you know, a little less tax revenue. And they didn't see the value in doing it, so they're like, well, we won't build. And that isn't the fault of, that isn't the fault of the staff or anything, it's just the way this is written, that's what happens. That's the choice for them. So, but if it was somebody who was developing that, a new shopping center and mixed-use development across the street in that same lot, they would've been like, of course I need a sidewalk, it's a no-brainer.
Well, that's why we came up with, you know, if, if you're not developing over X amount of square feet, cumulative square feet, the sidewalk requirement doesn't kick in.
Right, if my, my business develops five thousand square feet, I can't bring the value out of it. So then I'd be like, well, I'd develop elsewhere if I can't afford it and I needed it. Now, I'm not doing that, I'm just saying, I think that's the way a lot of small business or business developer would think. Whereas if I was building apartments, I would be like, okay, and I want a bus stop. We had that issue with the apartments on Graves Mill, that's what I told, told Mr. Maddox. Like, you really need to work with GLTC and try to get a bus stop too. You know, I think that the transit tied with that has a lot of value for a, for-profit developer.
Real quick on the size exemption, I, I do appreciate that exemption based upon the smaller size. And it does make sense to me to be, for consistency's sake, to go with the stormwater one. And I, I would almost say, if it's helpful, in the amendment, in parentheses, say similar to the stormwater constraint or exemption or whatever, it just kinda makes, it adds logic to why you're choosing five thousand. I, I don't know whether that complicates matters, but I, I didn't make the connection until it came up. But it just, it just, and as a developer or as someone, I mean, it's just one less thing they have to consider. It's two different exemptions, they both fall under the same size issue. That's a minor thing, but I think, I think that makes sense and it accomplishes part of what you're trying to do. And I think just explaining, you know, this exemption parallels the stormwater exemption. Having that in as wordage would, might be useful.
So is there anything in the draft that you do agree on?
Yeah, the five thousand square feet.
Alright. So also good.
Do we have that draft anywhere?
No, it disappeared.
Yeah, it's not in the drop box anymore, so
We no longer, I've been looking for it.
I haven't been able to put it back in there.
Thanks.
Can you scroll down to see?
Alright, once it scroll up, once it scroll down, which one?
Alright, wait. I'll wait.
So what, what this was changed, it said, you know, instead of along all streets, subject to site plan review, it said sidewalks shall be provided along the street on which development is addressed. And for developments with multiple street frontages along the secondary street frontage. Alright.
And you're thinking about changing the addressed, because sometimes they're not addressed on the larger
Right, on the highest volume. So basically, would say sidewalks shall be provided along, you basically define primary street as the street with the most traffic along, or the
Or the closest, like, some of the businesses on Ward's Road might have Ward's Road addresses, but they're really closer to Ward's Ferry and that's where their access is being taken from.
On the first line there, like me, I'm sure there's someone else that really doesn't grasp that this, subject to site plan review statement there. If we put appearance, it does not apply to single dwelling lots or single dwelling homes or lots of which a single dwelling home goes on.
There's a part of the ordinance that says what the ordinance applies to. And so I guess staff knows to refer back to the applicability section.
Yes, staff does.
Yeah.
Does he? Do you know?
I'll do it now.
I mean, the average person reading that, I mean
But they're not gonna get here unless they're doing a site plan.
Yeah, I mean, they're not gonna come in here, they're not gonna start building a development unless they've come in and talked to us about it. I mean, you're not gonna build a single family home unless you've been in and submitted plans. If you do, that's a big no-no.
I think we can be sure to message that going forward.
Okay. I reckon that, that's my big concern is, not everyone understands that there are people actually watch us on TV. They wonder, well, does this, does this apply to me? Am I gonna, my neighbors, we're gonna get a sidewalk, you know?
Is this what you put in? What's it called?
It just popped up. It took a little while because it's big.
Sidewalk.
Sidewalk zone and then it kinda cuts off.
Yeah, but that's not this.
You have to scroll down. It starts on like page five.
Bet you if you had a new iPad, you'd do.
Okay.
Did you find it?
Yeah, it just popped up in mine.
Yeah. I, um.
I think.
Okay. Now, I'm read this thing.
All right, so that section there, does the commission think that, just, just for discussion, should sidewalks be provided at least across the frontage of one street? We're not talking about waivers yet. We're talking about should it be provided?
Yes.
Yes.
Primary street. All right. Take some hooks, please. Does the commission think that the primary street should be defined as the street from which access is taken, or the street with the highest number of vehicles per day?
Is that an either-or, or is it? Yeah. Can the answer be yes, or was it supposed to be one of those?
How do you define primary street as well?
Say the, the highest volume of traffic.
Highest volume of traffic. Okay. Does the commission think that sidewalks should be provided on secondary street?
I think you're. I think this one with, you have a hundred cars per day, now whether that's, um.
All right, so you say it depends, so what does it depend on?
Which is, if you're on the corner of, see, if you're on the corner of Ward's and Ford, it would be obvious.
Yeah.
You'd have vehicles per day, right.
But, but if it's a street that goes almost nowhere.
Well, then that would be the one hundred vehicle trips per day.
Remember, a lot of times the side streets, the secondary streets are the ones that are gonna lead back to your neighborhoods behind the commercial development. Just think about that before we totally wipe them out. But the one hundred vehicles per day makes a lot of sense because that's where it's really going nowhere. There's not much back there. And it might be safe to walk in the street.
What if it's a side street? That, we'll use the, the, um, school, the, um, James River. A side street that actually is just a stub and ends in their parking lot. And then they would say, well, that's just my, my, my traffic and I have fifty employees, and I have a hundred trips per day from fifty employees.
If the street just ends in their parking lot?
Yeah, like it's a.
Why are we maintaining it? It should be their parking lot, right?
Well, it goes down, you know, it just goes down like a block and then they own the lot at the end or something like that. I don't, I don't, I don't know. A hundred, a hundred doesn't seem like, might be. I think, I don't know, some, some, sometimes I think we talk about things that probably would never happen.
I don't know. I think that's.
You know, that are just so few, so, so many few, I think if there was just a simple appeal, I think there would be so few things that really qualify for an appeal, that it'd be worth it to have something like that.
I know none of you wants to be the sidewalks czar, but I agree with him that, that some things just take a common sense approach, and we cannot think of all of them in this, it, no matter how many times we meet about this, we're not gonna think of them all.
Well, I'll, I'll throw this out. My conversations with James River Day School, they did not have a problem with Boonsborough Road or Bon-Ton Circle, or whatever.
Bon-Ton Road.
Bon-Ton Road.
Yeah.
Their issue was with the little short stuff.
Bon-Ton Circle.
Under this provision, they wouldn't have to do that.
Right.
Because it's only the two streets, and they would only do the secondary frontage. Is it, the secondary street is if they had, the way it's written now, over a hundred vehicles per day, which more than likely, they would have because that's where their, their cars go in and out.
And their neighborhoods back there.
I like the wording on this. The hundred streets, the hundred cars per day. I'm fine with that, um, as far as that goes. Still want a little bit of an out, but I'm fine with that.
I'll go along with that, Nancy.
All right. Is there any other discussion on that? So, then, then we obviously have the cross slopes in there, the Stormwater conveyances, conveyances and the physical constraints, which was from the original ordinance.
Now, we're. I do have one question about that because we, I had mentioned that you said it was a good question about what if you do have a, let's say if James River, half of that road frontage on Boonsborough was really steep. What, what, is there, um, is that exemptable thing?
It says lessen or eliminate.
What's that?
Well, here's your, here's your ability to give someone the ability to waive it. It says lessen or eliminate.
Okay.
So they could waive the whole thing.
So they could waive the whole thing.
Who am I missing that?
Well, they could require just a portion.
For sentence.
Oh, I was reading the bottom. I wouldn't even read that. It's zoning administrator, you know. Okay, yeah.
Or hopefully, you know, they could find another route, you know, that would go through the property, maybe it would avoid the steep area. Um, but that would be under the lessen part of that.
So then we're down to D, and this is where we're getting, this is where we were trying to address the parcels with long street frontage, small improvements.
I'm okay with that one, then.
Okay. Do we need to go further? Do we, I mean, is that enough for, you know, are you comfortable that on Florida Avenue, that if they built five thousand and one square feet, they'd have to build four hundred feet of sidewalk? That still doesn't quite seem right to me.
That, well, that's where I think if there was just some, some way to, some way to appeal in those, uh, pretty, pretty obvious cases, that, that would, that I would actually, because I think there is a logic around that. You know, there's definitely logic around that with the, with the water.
Yeah, so the other thing that.
Because, well, let me add one thing. And to me, then, see, in the long run, that, that land Hawkins Graves actually, they have land that they might sell to somebody, and there's a value.
So, the other thought that we had is, you know, we had discussed basing it on so many square feet of improvement versus a hundred feet of frontage, and when you get to that, you have to build a sidewalk. That's for existing uses where they're expanding. If, if someone came in and wiped out the entire Hawkins Graves site and redeveloped it, then at that time, I would offer that they would have to, they should have to build that sidewalk, period.
Right.
But, just to kinda ease into it, if you had that ratio to amount of street frontage, that might ease the burden a little bit. And you're just gonna run the risk that somebody's gonna stop it, whatever it is.
Right.
Four thousand nine hundred ninety-nine. Forty-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-nine.
But that's basing it on square feet, not value.
Of building.
Yes.
Well, it's kinda.
And we gotta find the right ration.
Yeah, we'd have to find the right ratio, which would.
So that would be, uh, an addendum to, to D then, kind of a?
It would be an E, I think.
Yeah. But that would be an either-or.
Well, if it's less than five thousand, you just don't have to do it.
Okay.
But, or it might be an expansion of D. It says, you know, for every hundred feet of street frontage, uh, you're allowed five thousand square feet of building addition before you have to do the sidewalk.
I think that, yeah, I thi- I think that's good.
So, do we wanna try and write that in now, or do you want us to bring it back?
Um.
I'm sorry, would you repeat it because I was talking.
I can't remember. So.
Expanding lower D.
You wanna go home, don't you?
That's right.
So, we're, we're talking about a ratio, so every hundred feet of frontage, you could do, you know, so if you had four hundred feet of frontage, for every hundred feet of frontage, you could build five thousand square feet before you have to.
You're not being penalized.
I think that's.
Okay.
So, but if, if you're at, if you're at ninety, if you've got a hundred feet of frontage, all right, and that's all you got, you're building a sidewalk.
Yeah.
All right?
Yeah.
But if you're at two hundred feet of frontage and you're only doing a five thousand square foot addition, you don't have to build it until you get to ten thousand square feet.
Well, no, it sounded like the, I, I was under the impression that if you're doing less than five thousand square feet, it doesn't matter how little frontage you have. You're okay.
Right. Right.
Right, but then as your property size gets bigger, then the scalable things kick in, which I think is good.
Yeah, I'd like to see something.
Yeah, and I, I'm okay, the goal is presumably for this to come back before this is a public meeting item that we can vote on. Is that right?
When we do, did we do a public?
We did a public.
We did, so it doesn't have to be a second one?
It doesn't have to be, but if you're, it might be beneficial for us to draft it and bring it back to you if you want, just to look at it a little, a little bit more closer, um.
I think that.
Put it out on the street and let people have a chance to look at.
I think that would be good. That, that's kinda why I came into this meeting, thinking what would happen, that we would come up with something that we were all on the same page, and then the final product would come before us again to actually vote. And, and hopefully not have as much discussion on it.
Right.
Next time.
So, are you okay that if they were to demolish the property and start redeveloping it? See, it's where you get kinda funny when you talk about redevelopment. You know, if they, if they tear it down and leave the parking area, is that redevelopment? They don't have to build the sidewalk? If they, if they tear it down, if they're, they're doing a different use, a shopping center or whatever, I mean, do we agree that they should have to build the sidewalk, whether it's four hundred feet or?
Yes.
Yes.
Five hundred feet.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, it's not really change, it's more redevelopment. Defining what, if they tear it down.
If they tear it down.
Yeah. And we do, and we do see that happening in the city.
If they leave the four walls and just gut the interior and do something totally new.
Well, that's what I'm thinking, like, some of the renovation stuff where the building is left intact.
That seems to happen though more in.
In places that have.
Yeah, in.
I'm just thinking hypothetically.
Right.
Yeah, you could have something like that. I mean, ob- obviously one of two things is gonna happen. We're gonna create something with too many loopholes and not be happy, or it's gonna be so tight that city council's gonna go, a lot of complaints from people.
Well, that, that goes back to the whole, uh, change of use. You know, because if they do that, there's a change of use, most likely.
I mean, I would think that this, hopefully this would appease some of the people that have been complaining. I mean, if you think about it, let's, let's talk about the New Covenant School, all right? Let's say that condition wasn't there, right? I mean, how many feet of frontage do they have?
Five hundred feet.
Let's say that's five hundred. They could build another twenty-five thousand square feet before they'd have to do the sidewalk. So.
That does address, I think that does address the ratio of the project investment versus the sidewalk cost.
Right, and I think, I think one of the things that i- in, in my conversations, it's, it's not just that, it's more a matter of, and this isn't just in that case, there's several, several, the people have said this to me, that the city shouldn't be required that anybody should build a sidewalk. So, I think that, I think that there is more to it than just that, and, but I think we have to have some kind of standard. So I don't think the argument, so you'll still have people who will complain because, you know, there's a lot of people in Lynchburg who don't want any government regulation.
Well, I would ask.
We've gotta have it.
Why does a city require people to build roads? Or water lines, or sewer lines?
Right, right.
Turn lanes.
Turn lanes, or, you know, backflow preventers, or, you know, why do, why do we require people to have fire hydrants within so many feet? Because that's what makes a city, and that's how we're providing for the general health, safety and welfare of our citizens, right? So, and walkability is something that's been promoted in your comprehensive plan. That's important, right? Now, obviously, we need to ease into this, right? Yet I think, honestly, I think this is one of the most important discussions that this commission has had and that city council will have that will affect the quality of life for Lynchburg for a long time to come, if you really think about it.
I agree, and I just wanna vote back. Uh, I don't wanna swing the pendulum too far the other way. I mean, I think that this, this proposal that you brought us, certainly not draconian, but I don't wanna make it too easy either. And, and you said, um, five thousand sque- square feet if you have a hundred linear feet of frontage, you know, that's fine. If you have two hundred feet, then you don't have to build a sidewalk. I don't know. You know, play with those numbers and see what you think makes sense, because I don't wanna give up all those sidewalks then.
Well, I'll, I'll turn Hannah loose, because she's a.
Hannah.
And I do think the change of use, I think the change of use really helps address some of the issues in, in my mind. Like, what, what happens, you know, you could, you could say that, but if, if you have a change of use and somebody's actually gonna have a much more intensive use of the property, and they have to apply for that, and, and then you can say, oh, well, then you have to, it doesn't matter, you still have to build sidewalks on the whole frontage. To me, I think that was important to, because that eliminates that Hawkins Graves, you know, issue. It, it takes care of it in multiple ways, because I think that is a real potential in that area, a change of use for that property in the next ten, fifteen years.
Or it, it gives them a certain amount of square footage that they could build.
Right, right, exactly.
Before the sidewalk requirement kicked in.
Right.
Yes.
Right. Now, I, I'm hesitant to bring it up, but I think it's important. So, for lots with a, that just have a hundred feet of frontage, right? Is it, should they have to build the sidewalk, or are we gonna just let little?
Then the lesser applies, the five thousand.
So if they go five thousand and one, they have to build it?
Yes. Yeah.
If they go what?
Five thousand, the five thousand, the size requirement.
Above five thousand?
Right.
Yeah.
On new, but we're just talking about adding to existing buildings. If it's a new Taco Bell and it's two thousand square feet, they have to build the sidewalk because that's a new.
Yes.
Development.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
You got that?
Yep.
Okay. Well.
Did Taco Bell have sidewalk? They had sidewalks.
Yeah, they had. It's really not the, the new people coming in building.
Yeah, they're, they want, they, yeah.
They do, and they want people to be able to walk and.
Right, right. That's why I think developers are, are actually supportive of that. You know, we see, and it's interesting in Charlottesville, they can kind of twist the arm and make them actually design the buildings the way they want, and they're like, okay, you know?
Well, and, and again, I understand, you know, a lot of these, uh, institutional uses and things, you know, reasonably, it's still a fairly new requirement, right, and they've probably started fundraising for these things a couple of years ago, and then it all of a sudden kinda gets, yeah, donk-donk, right? So, I mean, I understand that. And, uh, so I think looking for a way to phase it in over time possibly a good thing, so. We'll definitely draft it up that way and bring it to you.
Tom, is the, um, cost sharing for single-family developments somewhere else?
It's in the subdivision ordinance.
Okay. Because I, striking. I still feel like, especially since we're not seeing many of those, the perception is we're helping some people out, but not everyone. And if it's not happening that much anyway, do we gain much from having that? I don't know. Uh, and I'm not sure I'm comfortable with it to begin with. I mean, I've kinda feel like we shouldn't be helping them out, even if that's what we wanna promote. It's not fair to the rest of the citizens, but I'm, that's not a deal breaker for me. It's just, um. But I'm, that's not a deal breaker for me, it's just, since it's not showing up here, it's kind of under the radar. What we're voting on would not address that one way or the other, right?
No, that stays, that's in the subdivision ordinance.
Yeah.
We just wanted to let you know that.
So then it's.
That is a difference.
So we don't need to worry about it then? It's not even under discussion?
Not at this time, no. I mean, if you wanted to.
No.
No.
That would open up a lot of.
No, I do not.
How many, how many residential developments have been built in, in the last couple of years? There haven't been that many, have there?
Not single-family, not big ones. Do you remember, how many?
There's five, two.
In this.
That's true.
And when was that adopted, that particular aspect, what year, if the, for the, the cost year or the?
Oh, the sub, oh, no, the.
The, the, I just, the.
No, I mean, that's, that cost share piece has been in there for years and years and years.
Okay.
The, the requirement for them having to do the sidewalk was 2010.
Okay, gotcha.
So, I mean, there's a few, but I, I think what we're seeing, and, and you'll see at your next meeting, we're doing, that ain't gone, you know? Did Altona?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So they're, they're trying to get smaller densities to pay for.
Sure. And, and the fact that it's not part of this, I, I, I wasn't aware it was completely separate, so we're, I'm fine, just keep moving forward. I like what's been done with this.
Are we looking at sidewalk from both sides of the road throughout the city?
I mean, if you ask me, ultimately, yeah, but we're only looking at what's in front of their development.
Okay, quick, Nancy and I have been looking at the Hawkins Graves, we just have curiosity, looking at it, and the requirement for a sidewalk was across their property, but there's a sidewalk right across the road, going all the way down to the end of the Food Line Shopping Center. That, that would not have sufficed, they'd have to have their own sidewalk.
Correct.
Is there a crosswalk to get to that sidewalk, or a safe way to get there?
No, there's no crosswalk.
There's no crosswalk, but, you know, there's just.
I, I know.
You can sit there and put some stripes there, and then.
I mean, I'm just thinking, like, if you think about Old Forest Road, you've got sidewalk on one side, but I need to get to the thing on the other side, how can I get there?
That opens up a lot of doors if we offer waivers, because there's a sidewalk across the road, that just.
Or Timberlake.
I don't think.
There's a sidewalk over there, but I need to go for me to be on this side of the street.
Well, there's not much one on either side of Timberlake, but I know what you mean. I, I think if we're going to do it, we just enforce it regardless of what's on the other side of the road.
I think it'd be great if we, at some point, could do some type of pedestrian or bike. I think it's, I think we have some great trails, and I think that it's, it, it's a shame that they're not interconnected, and I think it gives a lot of opportunity for people to use alternative ways to get around if we look at connecting things better, in a, in a more efficient way. And I think some of the things we've done with bike lanes are great, but I see roads that we could do that with. It would not be very expensive, but probably just, we've never really even looked at them, you know, time-wise. But things like crosswalks, so that's just my thing. I think I talked to you all about that when I first started, like, uh, uh, trails and the interconnectivity.
So, is this something that we can try and knock out in, is it two weeks, or do we have a gap in between? Or do they, or, or?
Two weeks.
Or if it's a public item, do you, do you need more time?
No, you've already had your public hearing.
But you, I thought you had said you were going to.
I said, we'll put it out there.
Gotcha, so there's no time?
They can decide to reopen.
Because we've already done the.
Okay.
Legal notice for October 11.
Yeah, I mean, we'll have to play with the ratio and see what makes sense, and probably bring you some ideas on it.
But I'm comfortable with you, I know Tom had mentioned maybe getting something right now, but I'm comfortable with you guys coming, doing that and coming back with the idea we could, we could vote on it one way or the other. I mean, that'll be our fourth meeting on it. I think that's pretty good, Tom.
Hey, it's only your third, isn't it? Some of us, it's four.
All right, get back to big books.
All right. Any other, any other discussion on that particular item? Any other new or old business items? All right, so we do have our next meeting scheduled, October the 11th, so until then, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor? All right, thank you all.